Thank you very much, Allison Richardson. Up to two minutes.
Counsel, City Manager, my name is Allison Richardson. I'm a professional student in a professional program at ASU Downtown. I generally don't like to get up and speak in public. In fact, at my own wedding, I remained silent. So, that shows to you how important this issue is to me. I'm studying public administration. I have many fellow students that left in May, beginning of May, and they go to do internships, fellowships, they leave the city, they're planning on coming back. They, we have another year in our program. Everyone that I've talked to, were very unaware of any of these changes that are taking place. Not all students at ASU Downtown are undergraduate students. A lot of us are professional students who work full-time, who were enticed to come down to our program in 2012 when the parking hours were reduced from 8:00 PM to 5:00 PM to make it more accessible because there isn't enough parking for us. My classes go from 6:00 PM to 8:45 PM. I don't want to have to walk a mile in the dark to go park a mile away. It's not safe. I spoke to, I live in Levine. I spoke to Noakowski and Gallego. Neither of them were able to tell me anything they knew about concerns for students. I was told to let, ride the light rail or take the bus home. That's not a viable option to go to Levine. The light rail goes up a little ways and I'm going to ride a city bus at 8:45 at night. I do use public transit. My children go to school downtown. We ride the rapid transit. We come downtown, we ride the light rail, but it's not an option for me at 8:45 at night. When I hear talk about studies have been done, student input has been done, we have people out on the street seeing where students are parking. I feel like the transparency is not there because none of my fellow students know what's going on. So, I encourage you to talk more to the students and not just administrators at ASU because they will benefit financially by students having to go pay for ASU visitor parking, which is $6 every night. I'm in class four nights a week. I cannot afford $6 an hour. That's going to come to over $750 for a program that I already pay close to $6,500. So, to sum up everything, I had the honor of Ed Zirker to come into one of my classes last semester and he spoke about the value that people with degrees bring to cities. So, please don't punish students right now. Keep us in downtown. Let us help revitalize downtown because we're a main driving force that has brought back downtown. Five years ago, you would have not seen many people visiting bars or restaurants. But, when you walk around at night, there's a, there's a few more of us that are going to restaurants and if you raise the parking rates, students are going to leave right after class and it's going to be less hospitable for us. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. All right, so that was all the cards that I have. Are there anyone else here to provide testimony on the issue about the proposal to move the market rate-based pricing for parking meters in the City of Phoenix? All right, now I'll turn to members of the, of the council. Let's see, Councilwoman Pastore.
Rick, can you answer Greta's questions? I mean, do you have the answers to that?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council and our council report on this item. I think she asked two basic questions. One was about the cost of the meters. We've allocated $300,000 in this, this '14-'15 year for the first round of meters to fill up these zones one, two, and three. And then we've allocated $250,000 a couple of years later to roll out in future zone four. So, those are the costs for the meters themselves. And then, in the CCR, there was a chart which had the program operating costs, which does increase because if we don't have a staff person to manage the program and we don't provide additional enforcement, nobody's going to pay attention to what the meters are. And so, for the '14-'15 year, estimated operating cost for eight months, I'm sorry, for 10 months is $868,000, which is up about $150,000 from this current year. That is in the proposed budget and it's in the proposed, the numbers that Mario has included for revenue are net of those cost increase numbers. For a full year, for '15-'16, we expect that to be around $900,000 for the total operating cost for the program. So, both these, those numbers were reported at the two different subcommittee meetings that we had and were in our council report.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman, Councilman Gates.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question, so again, as has been mentioned, just not that long ago, the council rolled back the, the times that the meters would be turned off and that includes Saturdays. Now, with this proposal, we would have the meters on on Sundays and on holidays. For those folks who would be doing the enforcement, the officers, would they be getting paid overtime to work on Sundays and holidays?
Mayor, Councilman Gates, that's not our intent. We would have just different shifts for people.
I believe, then, we've heard people talk about this today, that we're now in a position where people beyond the downtown area, people who live up in District Three, the area that I represent, are excited about what's going on downtown. They're, they're coming down here, they're talking to people up in our area about it. And I'm very concerned that when we do this, first of all, we're increasing the period of time that we're going to have the parking meters on and we're increasing the cost to park downtown. Not only is it going to create the issues for the students that we've heard about, but it's also going to serve to discourage people from up in District Three and probably other far-flung parts of the city from coming to downtown. And I think, you know, I'm excited about the, the work that my colleagues have done here, especially, you know, the mayor, our former mayor, and those folks who represent the downtown area, all the efforts that have been put into downtown. And I don't think that this is the time that we should be taking these measures that are going to discourage, frankly discourage, people from other parts of the city to be coming down. And especially the timing of this, you know, really where it certainly looks like this is just being driven to address a budget deficit as opposed to being done for a variety of other reasons. I will not be supporting this item today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman Gates. Councilman Noakowski?
Mayor, I don't, I actually don't sit on any of these committees that this was presented at. So, I have some questions. First of all, did we talk about maybe increasing the penalty fees instead of raising the meter fees at any of these subcommittee?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, that issue did not come up. In, in part, it has to do with a large percentage of those fees that end up not going to the city. They go to the state a lot. There's surcharges when they become court obligation, so that's, that's part of the reason.
And the other thing is, we're hea, hearing from a lot of students. Were the students included in this conversation? Did we talk to the, the governing board of the students to actually see if, what their thoughts were, if they could actually create a committee where we can actually talk to the student body about increasing the fees?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, prior to the city council subcommittee meeting, which is just decided, we held some community open houses, visited with several neighborhood associations, spoke with the Downtown Partnership and lots of downtown businesses. We did not have a meeting with the student, the students. We did not have any students participate in any of our open houses or in any of the subcommittee meetings. However, as a result of a couple of letters we received in the last few days, and particularly the letter from the student government, we've set a meeting for next week to talk with them about, to get their input about the implementation in the area around ASU. And remember, what you're doing here is you're, you're, we're asking for you to approve a range and to allow us to operate this like a business based upon supply and demand. And so, it gives us the flexibility to respond to the input we receive in terms of what the maximum rate might be in a particular area. So, hopefully, with your approval, we continue to, this meeting next Thursday is, unfortunately, I would love to have said we had it a month ago, but we didn't. But, we're excited to, and they're excited to meet with us and give us their input and begin to work on crafting something that works for everybody.
And Rick, you know, sharing downtown with District Eight, one of the biggest concerns we hear all the time is when there's an event, or there's a concert, there's a cultural event downtown, that all the meters are taken up on the weekends, that the employees actually park at the meters. So, we have a lot of restaurants that are taking over our historic homes and converting them into retail businesses. So, we've been addressing that and that's one of the issues from last year where we decided to kind of lower the, the hours because we started hearing from all those retails. So, one of the concerns I have is that we really didn't sit down with the student body at ASU. I think we need to do that. The other concern that I was hearing out there from the ASU students were the parking situation. I believe, as I talked to some of the ASU faculty when they were actually building the additions to ASU, that they had enough parking for the students. As I can recall, west of Second Avenue, I thought we had some lots and I think those lots, when I drive by, they're halfway empty. I'm not sure if there's enough parking. And my thing is, yeah, there's a lot of needs out there that I'd like, but what are the wants? And sometimes the wants, I would have loved to park right next to my classroom too when I was going to ASU, but I just couldn't afford it. I needed to park in what we call that Lot 59 where you would have to sometimes even take a, a bike just to bike in, you know, or a skateboard. And just to get that reasonable rate to park because it was just too expensive to park at the meters. So, I, I can understand the convenience part of it, but at the same time, we need to look at the reality that this city's growing and we're the sixth or the fifth largest city in the country. And we have all this retail, all these great restaurants and retail coming into downtown. So, we have to deal with both. And I hear with Ms. Rogers, what you're talking about, is that we need to think of the students first. But, at the same time, I think ASU has a responsibility to make sure that we have enough parking for the students also. So, saying that, do we have enough parking, especially in the west of Second Avenue, for those students if they want to purchase student parking?
Mayor?
Thank you very much, Councilman Noakowski. Yeah, please.
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, I, I'm, well, I worked with the ASU campus issues previously in terms of the development of the camps and that sort of thing. I don't, I don't know what the situation is exactly with the parking. We have been in touch with the ASU administration once we received these letters in the last few, few days. And we will talk with them and work with them to make sure that they understand the dynamics here and have the opportunity to respond to the issue. I, I think the issue is both availability and rate. And I also mentioned that, I think you are aware, that we are building a new garage on the Phoenix Biomedical Campus. Not, we are not building, private developers building it, but the city is going to be leasing some spaces that are not yet allocated to any building. And I know Mr. Blue informed me that there has been some discussion with ASU about them leasing some of those spaces to make those available and they're very convenient to the campus. But, the question is, what's the price point? And it's possible that even some of the spaces we lease, if they're not being used for purposes, we may be able to make some of them available at a reasonable price as well until such time as the bio campus develops further.
And do you happen to know what the ongoing parking rate for ASU student, at one of the ASU parking lots costs?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, no, I do not. Do you, Ray? No, okay. One of these students may be able to tell you.
Mayor, Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, apparently, we, I just got noted that it's $60 a month, $7.20 a year for the ASU parking.
Fact check, is that correct?
Yes.
It depends on what parking lot you park at. ASU has a multitude of parking lots. So, our closest one can be $800 for the semester, for the year. One about a mile and a half away can be way cheaper. So, it's not a consistent flat rate, depends on the parking lot.
So, ASU does market rate pricing based on the, how close to the campus? Okay. All right, let's see. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. The fact of this is that we wouldn't probably be doing this right now, as a couple of speakers have said. If weren't for the revenue shortfall this year, the budget deficit is driving this, it doesn't sound like it's ready to be rolled out, as a couple of speakers mentioned. I'm surprised we didn't know what, you know, I asked that question this morning, you know, what, how much does it cost to actually park at ASU? Apparently, nobody was thinking of the students until a few days ago. It just doesn't, you know, we can't do the app thing yet, so that's also not an option. It just seems like there are a lot of variables that I think probably in normal times, we wouldn't be doing this. And so, to do something that is going to have sweeping and potentially unintended consequences on the businesses downtown, I don't think we should be doing this right now. I understand the driving force behind it is to have more money to spend, but I would strongly encourage this council not to do this at the present time. Wait till things sort of settle in, more study is done, and then think about what we really want to do in some sort of coherent plan. But, we're doing this, I'll throw back, fall back on another phrase, my rural youth, willy-nilly and, you know, just kind of throwing it together. I think that's a mistake. I hope it doesn't injure students. I hope it doesn't injure businesses. I hope it doesn't undo what we're trying to do with some of the initiatives downtown that we've been working on, some of us for years. So, it's a little frustrating to see this come to fruition like this. I know what you're saying about, you know, this isn't a set plan, there's going to be ranges and so forth. But frankly, before I vote for this, I'd certainly want to see the actual plan, which it sounds like we don't really have. We just have ranges. So, I'll be voting no. I appreciate the time and explanation. We'll go forward, I guess, with this already in the books.
Mayor? Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of comments. First, I would just ask, why do we not put in meters or charge and have parking in the two downtown city garages, City of Phoenix garages?
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, the city operates a number of garages. The Convention Center operates a few and, and we, Public Works Department has contractors who operate garages that are around City Hall. We have not analyzed whether or not we have enough empty spaces to do that. It's more efficient?
No, on evenings and weekends.
Oh, evenings and weekends. Well, first of all, we have a-
Or holidays.
We, so, Mayor, Councilwoman-
Or Super Bowls.
Williams. We, we have actually some contractual obligations on evenings and weekends when, with the Comerica Theater, where they are allowed to operate our garage for their patrons after hours and on weekends when there are events in that garage. But, there may be opportunities. One of the things Mr. DeHoney and I have been discussing is whether or not we could manage our garages in connection with our meters when we go to this kind of a system so that we also have the opportunity to allow the public to use empty spaces in our garages. And we'll need to do a study to, to really figure out whether that, that could work. Whether they're, it's probably more efficient not to have them have meters in them, but rather to staff up and-
Yeah.
But, we could still allow the public to use those garages. And in fact, they are open on some evenings and weekends for the public to use, depending upon-
For the most part, they're open.
Right. So, I think on a baseball game nights, the 305 garage, I don't know if it is now, but at some point, it was.
Well, I would like to see one. You pursue that and find out a way because I think that's a source that fills a need that's downtown that we're talking about. I, I am also wanting, if you're going to pursue this, although I've heard this presentation a couple of times, the students weren't mentioned and I should have known better because I have a grandson that's going down there and he is already complaining about the parking and that one parking lot that he can afford is, closes at 5:00, but his class doesn't get out to 5:30. And so, I want you to work very closely with the school on those parking lots and try to coordinate anything that you're doing, any meters, any setting, that, that accommodates the student so that they are not hung up a half hour from class ending, saying you have to get out of there or you're going to get a ticket. I just think that's unacceptable. And then, thirdly, I am very concerned that, I've heard DeeDee talk about over and over, the lighting and the safety in downtown. And if you are going to have students walking, male or female, I want to make sure that you have done a thorough survey and know if there are any dark spots, that is, there any landscaping that could pose a danger and make this the safest area of the city you can. Because I, I know that there are areas, and I know you're going to have a new precinct downtown. It should be a top priority to make sure these students, this area is patrolled and that we don't have any type of incidents there. And I think this has to be rolled into this plan if you're going to do any adjustments with that parking because that's a whole new stage and I know, I have enough experience with kids this age. It's a whole new world when you start out on this type and, and it doesn't come natural and they have to plan and they have to try it, often in the hard way. And I want to make sure that we make the easiest path, the safest path possible to introduce this and make this happen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for those comments. All, all excellent points. Any other comments by members of this council? Mayor? Councilman DeCecio, please.
Yeah, I too will not be supporting this for a variety of reasons, but I've got a couple of questions of staff. If this, if this passes, who ends up making the decision when to raise the rates within that variable categories? Who's, who's going to make the determination?
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, through this action, you would authorize a street transportation director to do that.
And then, when will that come to a public body or will we vote on those rates or is that just going to be done? By whose hand makes that determination? The street transportation alone?
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, the item before you today would authorize us to operate this sort of like a business with supply and demand and just like parking lot operators and other businesses do, the manager of the business, in this case, it's the street transportation director, would have the authority to set those rates for particular times, raise and lower them. But, of course, we would continue to get input from you, from customers, in making those decisions.
It's akin to what we do at the Sky Harbor Airport where we give authority to the director of the airport. We give them a range that's approved by this council, that they can go up or down based upon the market, the market conditions. I, that's, what my understanding is, is very akin to what we've, we've done consistently on this body with regard to parking at Sky Harbor Airport.
And Mayor, so-
Mayor, that's exactly, that's exactly the case. You'd be doing exactly what you've authorized at Sky Harbor.
Mayor, you also have given us that authority at the Convention Center and our parking lots that we operate and our parking garages we operate and at our golf courses that we operate.
All right, excellent.
I want to make sure that the public understands what's really occurring here. You're becoming less and less transparent because what you're doing is you're giving somebody in some back office the determination of when and, and when they should be able to make the determination when they want to raise the rates, not where it's done in a public setting. In the past, the City of Phoenix has always had these rate increases come to the council. Now, we're literally giving some person the full authority to raise rates as he or she sees fit. That has not ever happened at this, at these types of public venues. It just hasn't happened before.
But, Councilman, we're giving, if, if this passes, we'll give the authority to raise or lower the rates because there's a static pricing now because of the technology that we have in the past approvals. And, and what we've been doing obviously is similar to what this council gave the support to the director of the airport to do market rate pricing at Sky Harbor and was just mentioning what the authority we've given to the director of, of the Phoenix Convention Center for market rate pricing and parking for our various conventions, which is not static pricing, it's variable pricing based on the, of the market. So, we, we haven't in fact given similar authority in the past.
Well, this is the first time that this has happened in where the, the majority of the masses that are not destination-driven are going to be going to. This is the first time. It is literally leading us into a less transparent system where one individual or multiple individuals that are behind closed doors can make the determination when and where that they had to raise the rate. In the past, the city council always had made that determination. Now, I want to make sure that this council is quite clear on this and they understand that. They're literally giving up this right, the right of the public, the public ability to go in there and protest this to an individual that most people may not even know who they are. So, that is what's occurring here today. There's also another que, again, how much is a parking ticket? How much is a parking, does anyone know how much it costs for a parking ticket?
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, I think the initial rate for a parking ticket is $16.
$15?
I'm sorry. It's $31, but there's an early payment discount to 16, 1-6.
So, if they don't make the early payment, it could be $30. The other is, you're going to have this, is there going to be a phase-in period where people are going to be not cited because they're going to be coming on the weekends? Like, I'm, I bring my family downtown on the weekends and not used to parking, you know, paying for parking and because there just aren't that many people there. Now, for those individuals that do come on the weekends or after hours, or is it just going to be all of a sudden a sticker shock? How's that going to be phased in?
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, first of all, the hours, we're going to do a lot of public notice for, before we implement the hours change in August. And then, secondly, we'll be, obviously, continue to engage with the students and others about the variable rates, which will be implemented in November. And we're going to do a lot of public outreach. Councilwoman Pastore during the first subcommittee meeting we had, raised this question because her major concern was, it can be confusing for people if the rates are changing. And so, we want to make sure that people understand what the range is. This is not something new we're inventing here. Most major cities do this. We want to learn from their experience and do a lot of public outreach about this. And yes, as a result of that dialogue that we had, we did discuss having some sort of a grace period for when we implement the variable rates, that, that we not, we not ticket people during the first, let's say, 30 days of implementation so that people can get used to the, the new rates. That was a, a concern that had been raised at subcommittee and, and we will-
That's good. I didn't know that was part of this, Rick. The other part of it then, then, do you just put a notice on their car or what do you do? So, that they know that they surpassed, they passed the hours or that there's this new variable rate for them?
You know, we haven't worked out the details of that, but I think that's a great idea that during the, during the trial period, if you will, we'll put notices on people's cars about that. But, we'll, we'll talk with the police enforcement staff about what the most efficient way to handle that is. If that's, if you're talking about-
You've got a city of 1.5 million people, Rick, and not everybody's going to know that this is occurring. I think that once they do, it's going to be a sticker shock, especially if they end up getting a ticket on their car when they're used to doing things a certain way. I would not assume that everybody's listening to every single word that we say at the city. The other question I've got is, why now? Why does this have to pass now, today? Why can't we wait until September until there's a lot more clarity? The message I'm hearing is that, well, we need you to pass these fee increases and then we'll work it out. That's not a very good message to be sending anybody on the council, any decision-maker. Kind of like, well, you know, vote for this and then you'll figure it out. I'd like to know what those things are first. Is there a reason why we have to rush it today?
I'll ask the city manager to, to respond.
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, yes, this is part of the overall budget balancing plan where we built in $11 million of additional revenue in order to save services combined with city employment concession, wage concessions, and some efficiencies. So, the reason for today is because we are building a budget that is balanced. This, this also achieves a policy direction, so it's doing two things at the same time. But, the financial aspect of it is part of the balanced budget plan that we have proposed today.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, City Manager Zirker, because if you look at what occurred back in 2012, and I appreciate the students coming forward with that, this city council unanimously said that the policy direction was the right direction, was to basically allow people to come there on the weekends, after hours. And now, it's a dramatic shift in the other direction. I and others had no clue that this was going to be moving forward until it was created through the budget situation. So, that again tells me that there isn't a lot of thought put into this other than a grab for money. The other I'd like to bring out to the college students that are out there-
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, our professional staff have, are constantly assessing and evaluating the downtown parking situation and so, it was, it has been well thought through.
But, did, when did it come out before the budget crisis? When did someone come out and say, hey, we've got to raise rates before the so-called budget crisis? Because it never hit my desk.
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, I will tell you that from the day- Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, I will tell you that, from the day we went to no enforcement after hours, our staff and folks in the downtown have been waiting for the opportunity to go back to allowing that, because it really wasn't working for the, the purpose of parking meters is to turn over parking, and it wasn't happening. And it was encouraging behavior that is not the, the right use of the public right of way. Might as well take out the meters if we're not going to be enforcing. And so, we were, you were right. We were not making a proposal to the council until the dialogue about the budget came up. But we were anxious to do so at any time anybody was willing to entertain it, because, given the changes in the downtown, the current construct just simply wasn't working, as Mr. Kreider said.
Well, it just opens a door, Rick, of the same thing we saw with the, the pension debate, you know, putting a proposal forward all of a sudden, just like this here. I'm glad you're talking about it being part of a budgetary issue, rather than, you know, because that is the need of you getting it through today. I get it. I think the public understands that. I don't agree with it, because it never really hit our desk until there was a budget issue. And it became part of a revenue generating scheme, or a plan, or whatever it is you wanna call it. But I do wanna point something out to the college students. I mean, I was a college student, I know how hard it was. I worked all the way through school. But now, you're starting to see, unfortunately, what happens when government takes more than it needs. When there are other alternatives that are out there to save money, instead, it comes to you after your pocketbook. Now, these students are actually gonna be able to see what's happening within their government, and the fact that this was not that well thought out, and it has to be done later. I mean, if you think about it, this council's still gonna be voting on a plan, well, actually, voting on a fee increase without a plan. And I think that that's the wrong direction. I think it sends our students a, a, a bad message as well. I'm gonna be voting against it, Mayor.
All right, excellent, Councilman DeCecio. Any other comments by members of this council? Councilman Nowakowski?
You know, Mayor, before voting on this, you know, I'd like, I mean, I have no problem voting on the parking zones and the rates and all that, but before voting on the issue, I'd like to assure that staff meets with the ASU students, that you address the safety and the lighting issues that Councilmember Williams addressed, and that we bring back, that you bring back to us the rates. I mean, from fifty cents to four dollars, I mean, it's just so large and so vast, that we, as a council, I, I don't feel comfortable just approving that. I like to see some type of a, a plan where we, as the council, can actually approve it before it's implemented. And so, that's what I'm asking you all to do so. I think we can approve the, the parking zones and the rate range, but before we implement it, I'd really like you to address those issues that I, that I addressed. And I'm not sure if we can put that in the motion.
Well, I appreciate what you're saying, although I think the concept of market rate is that it could change quickly. For example, if there is a particular concert going on at U.S. Airways Arena, they, they may wanna go to the four-dollar number, whereas if there is a sporting event, there, there may be less demand. And so, I wanna make sure it's clear that we're giving authority to, within that range, we're giving authority to, to our professional staff, to, to, obviously, they work with, I assume, consultants and others, to kinda help us determine what that, what that rate should be, but, but basically allow the user judgment, very similar to the, the authority we've given to Sky Harbor Airport, very similar to the authority that we've given to the Phoenix Convention Center. We're giving them authority to engage in demand. So, obviously, they can't come before us if it's gonna go up one particular night, because Billy Joel is playing at U.S. Airways, or whatever. But that's the kind of authority that I think if we vote yes on this, that we're giving to our professional staff. By the way, we're also giving them authority to reduce it as, as appropriate, if there is less demand as well, let, reduce it from the current pricing that's there now. All the ranges include an amount that is less than the current, current amount. So, I appreciate the sentiment, what you're saying. I don't, but I think by giving them this authority, I don't know if we'll be able to do that, because it's gonna be moving, and it could be different, one night than a different night than, than a different night, depending on the, what, the activity that's happening in downtown. Mr. Neymar?
Mayor, Councilman, uh, Mayor, to address Councilman Nowakowski's comment, I, I think what you stated is, is absolutely correct, Mayor. However, we would be happy to come back and sort of provide a report or brief subcommittee on sort of what the implementation plan is. We're, you know, based on the input we got from ASU students in this area, we think we're only gonna go to, to here on a regular base, on a general basis, between these hours, we're only gonna be at fifty cents, and between these hours, we're gonna be, we expect to be at a dollar. We could do that sort of thing before we implement, so that you are fully informed about the, the thinking that we have in terms of the administration of this, based upon the input we receive. Would that be helpful to you?
Be very helpful. Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions by members of this council? Councilman Valenzuela, please.
I appreciate it. I just wanna point out that what we are adopting is policy, and of course, it's up to management to actually manage. And this is, it, it just, it concerns me that, again, you know, we, we have this perception that's being thrown out to the public, that people and, I'm being facetious, but smoke-filled rooms will figure out ways to, you know, gouge the public, and, and on and on, and if it's never been done this way before, well, guess what? This is a mayor-management form of government. We all know that, as, as elected officials on this governing body. We understand that we set the policy, and then it's up to the city manager and staff to manage. There's a charter system in place for a reason that, that prevents any one of us actually, you know, get down and, and start managing ourselves. And, and so, I do, I do wanna point that out, in, in the sake of transparency. I think it's important that we let the public know exactly how this works. So that, that's the first thing. Secondly, you know, this isn't the most fun thing to talk about. Sometimes, responsibility isn't the most fun thing to, to work with, and to, to, especially something like this. You know, as, as our city manager was just mentioning, there was a deficit. Very tough decisions had to be made. We had to ask more than fourteen thousand city employees to take a concession. Our police officers, our firefighters, landscapers, librarians, everyone else. Fourteen thousand-plus city employees took a concession. That's a very tough decision. It's a, it was, it was a responsible decision to make, given the circumstances. It was between that, or potentially closing down senior centers after school programs, and so on, and so forth. Now, as our city manager mentioned, one of the other things we had to do was look at these types of services. Now, parking meters in, in particular. When it first came to my office, my desk, I sat with members of our management staff, and I asked, when, when was the last time we addressed the rates of parking meters? Because, you know, certainly, we're talking about raising the rates. I understand that, you know, the, the conversation has been brought this far, probably because of the deficit, but, you know, what do we have? What are we looking at? And the answer, and please correct me if I'm wrong, was early 2009. So about five years, okay? And when the City of Phoenix was studied, looked at, and compared to other major cities, cities like Austin, Los Angeles, San Francisco, and on and on, we are way behind. We're way behind in terms of what we are charging, which, you know, again, responsibility of, of just keeping up will help with the general fund, will help with many of those services that we're trying to keep, continue to provide to our constituents. And we're also behind in, in technology, which we've talked about. We want every parking meter to, to be able to take a credit card, for an example. So those are some of the things that, that we're working on. When it came through the Downtown Aviation Reinvestment Subcommittee, we actually looked at it, and there was a, a rate of, that was being recommended of, up to not four dollars, but six dollars. Very, very steep, but even then, I believe it was at market, from what we were finding around the country, when it comes to other major cities. I do wanna credit, and I hope you don't mind me mentioning this, but Councilwoman Gallego, who pointed out that, you know, four dollars is steep, but six dollars is certainly steep. She made the amendment. It was supported to bring to the council to make the limit four dollars. Not six dollars, but four dollars. Still, very high, and depending on, you know, where we are, and who we are, you know, it's higher for, for some than it is for others, like, like our students, for an example. I, like everyone else, I do support city staff, continue to work with our students when it comes to this. But, you know, I, I made the motion, and, and I, and I stand by it. You know, this is, this is not the, the easiest decision. It's another tough decision, but sometimes, this is what governing is all about.
Thank you very much, Councilman Valenzuela. Any other comments? Councilwoman Gallego?
One of the important things that's happened since this council last revisited is, we did have an election, and I am one of the new representatives for downtown, and went through a lot of process of talking to downtown businesses and residents, who would complain about people parking at five o'clock on a Friday and still being there come Sunday night. And, and the businesses would say, this isn't doing us any good. You know, I count myself as a strong supporter for trying to get more people to live downtown, but we need that circulation if we're gonna have the businesses and restaurants that bring millennials downtown, that vibrancy. I've been very involved with Complete Streets, and over and over again, we hear from experts in that area that circulation is essential to that vibrancy in the downtown. I was a student in, in two urban environments, San Francisco and Boston. I made the mistake of having a car for one semester, and learned that that was not the best way to go, and then relied on public transit. Got plenty of studying done in, in, in motion, and so, that was part of my student experience. That's not, we don't have quite as a robust public transportation system here, so that's not an option for a lot of people, and I understand that. And I'm committed to making it fix, to fixing that. We have twelve thousand students, but we want more than that. We, and we're gonna need to have public transportation be part of that solution. We're not gonna be able to build meters for every one of those individuals, so it's gonna have to be a complicated process, and we're not gonna find the solution the first time through, so it will be, we'll go through many iterations and hope to, to have people continue to stay involved. Many times, people are very excited at the beginning of the process, but this will be a long one, and if we're gonna have a successful downtown, we'll have to continue the dialogue. But I am convinced that more circulation is, is essential to having a successful downtown. So for me, this is an important public, public policy. It's not just about the budget, but also about what kind of downtown do we want? And over and over again, the retail stores say, we need people to be able to get in and out. We want people to come shopping on the weekends, and if there are people who are able to park the entire day, we're losing out on this business. So it won't be easy, but I think this will be a better downtown in the long term.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Councilman Nowakowski?
Mayor, I'll support this issue as long as we're guaranteed that we're gonna be talking to the ASU students. I mean, we have twelve thousand students that we didn't really communicate with, and we talk about transparency. I mean, we have the Vice President of the Student Body here, saying that we didn't communicate to that body. So such a large body of downtown that use, that are users of these meters, and we didn't even have communication with them. So I wanna make sure that there's some type of communication with those, those students. The other thing is, I really feel strong with the whole safety and the lighting issue, that we need to maybe address that. So if there's somehow, some way that the maker of the motion could secure that we pass this, but we also bring it back to, before we implement it, making sure that we heard out the ASU students, and that we took care of those issues of lighting and safety, I would, I'd be in favor of the motion.
All right, so as I understand the request, it's that a, a commitment that our professional city staff will reach directly out to ASU downtown students, assuming that the concept of demand-based pricing is passed by this council, to get, make sure they get their input before anything is implemented in that area, and then a report back to this council relative to issues of, of safety of pedestrians, particularly heading towards campus. I mean, I, I can't imagine the maker of the motion would oppose, oppose that. We're not gonna come back and vote on it, but we'd get a report back from our professional city staff.
I totally agree, and I do, again, wanna thank our students from Arizona State University for coming out. And I wanna remind our city staff, who, you know, obviously thinks about our, our students on, on many other issues, this is a stakeholder. And regardless of what we're talking about, whether it's, you know, parking meters, or light rail, or anything else, just as we reach out to all the small business owners and, you know, CEOs in the area, residents, we should always be reaching out to the student body of Arizona State University as well.
All right. Other comments by members of the council? Councilman Gates?
Not to steal a Jim Waring term, but, you know, the, the willy-nilly nature of, of what's going on here today, I think, again, proves that, that we need to look very seriously at something that we discussed in the Finance Efficiency and Economy Subcommittee today, and that's the concept of developing a strategic plan as, as a city, working both with staff and, and mayor and council. I think it would help ground, as we're having to make these very difficult decisions and issues, and, and having to do it in a short time span, if we were to have that strategic plan to kinda ground what we're doing, I think it would make these types of issues a little bit easier to, to address. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Other members of the council? Okay, so the motion was in favor of the staff recommendation. There was a, I guess, a friendly amendment asking that there be a commitment that, that our professional city staff work directly with ASU students, that if we, if we adopt market-based pricing, to get their significant input before any market-based pricing is implemented, and then also to make sure that, that they come back for this council and give a report on issues of safety for pedestrians walking to and from the, the campus. So that's the motion. We have a second. Roll call.
DeCecio?
No.
Gallego?
Yes.
Gates?
No.
Nowakowski?
Pastor?
Yes.
Valenzuela?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Mayor Stan?
Yes, so the item passes on a six-to-three vote of the city council. Thank you, everyone, for taking the time to come down and provide testimony on that important item. Next item on the agenda is item number seventy-four, proposal to amend our ordinance relative to fees for senior centers in the City of, of Phoenix. Do we have a motion on item number seventy-four?
Mayor, I would move approval to increase the membership fees for the senior centers. I think it's, goes from ten dollars to twenty dollars a year?
For residents.
For residents.
To forty.
Twenty to forty for non-residents. And I have talked to seniors in my district multiple times about this. They are very, very supportive. Their senior center is one of the most important things in their lives. It's not just the food, but the camaraderie, and the events, the social interaction to them. Even the ones on social security said how important it is, and that was a very small price to pay, and they absolutely supported it. So I have no qualms about making this motion.
Okay, so a motion in favor of the recommendation. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. I have two cards on this item. First will be Tim Serikowski. Tim, did you wish to provide testimony on this item? I think he had provided testimony on the previous item already, may have to leave, but he was opposed to that item. Next speaker will be, if necessary, so it's your choice whether it's necessary or not based upon the motion. Tim McCabe, representing the Arizona Food Marketing Alliance. Tim, did you wish to provide testimony on this item?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so we have no other additional cards. Any of us should testify, provide testimony on this, on this proposal? Vice Mayor?
My comment about this, and I'll keep it short, you know, again, revenue grab, but I will point out that, in this case, a rather small one. I think the staff estimate, if you see on page four of the separate packet provided on this, basically, we're raising sixty-five thousand dollars with this. I'll be voting no. Big part of the reason I'm voting no is that this is actually less money than the seventy-eight thousand dollar pay raise that was given to the city manager in 2012, and about the same as the increase for the new city manager, when he became city manager, from his previous salary. So, you know, we're charging seniors for pay raises for upper management, effectively, and I find that a frustration, and we shouldn't be doing it. Thank you.
All right. Other members of the council, who wish to provide testimony on this item?
Mayor?
Councilman DeCecio, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the time. I, to echo what Councilwoman Williams said about how important these senior centers are to our seniors and our- are to our seniors in our community, it also shows how deep that they're willing to dig into their own pocket to hand, to keep something that's so vital to them. For so many of these seniors, it is literally their only lifeline to others, to the ability to talk to others, their ability to communicate and feel like they have a camaraderie. Otherwise, they'd be stuck in a home. Of course, they're going to come out and say, charge me whatever it is, because even if they may not have the money, the real question is here, is why the city of Phoenix can protect a public relations budget, a lobbying budget, and still, at the end of the day, stick it to these seniors? It's just not fair. And it shows where the budget has gone in the past, not just now, but also in the past, where it's always seniors, police, and fire. Those are the ones that are always on the chopping block, because they create the most emotion, when in fact, the city has had every opportunity to do this strategic planning, to look at those non-essential, non-strategic functions, and look at those areas first. So for the $65,000, it could be $5, it doesn't matter. The fact of the matter is, the city of Phoenix made a decision, and this council, this mayor and council, will be ending up making a decision, that it's easier to charge seniors more than it is to look at your internal structures. Not one cut was made to public relations, not one cut was made to the lobbying budget, not one vacant position was cut of the 104 that we looked at. As a matter of fact, Mayor and others on the council are going to have budget increases. At the same time, they're going to be cutting seniors. It's wrong to do that. This ought to, at the very least, ought to be coming from the council and mayor budget. Take it out of our budgets, don't take it from the seniors.
All right, thank you very much, Councilman DeCecio. Councilman Nowakowski.
Mayor, it's my understanding that not, that we wouldn't turn one senior away, right? If there is a financial burden, or so, that we would have some type of a scholarship or some type of a voucher program.
I'll ask the city manager to respond to that question, because it has come up regularly, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Nowakowski, that is correct. Our senior councils, and Mr. Gallego and Ms. Johnovich can speak more detail about that, do have resources to help seniors who are unable to pay.
All right, our deputy city manager, Ms. Johnovich.
Yes, Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, members of the council, currently, if we have a senior that's unable to pay the membership fee, the state councils will cover the cost for the senior, so we would continue to provide that same service.
Thank you very much.
And Mayor, just as a follow-up on that.
Just a moment, I want to make sure.
It's not just about that, it's literally about the fact that there's more than enough money in our budgets alone, the council and mayor's budget, in the increases that are in there to accommodate seniors. There's no reason for the city to be charging these seniors anything more, when they're starting to see their elected officials have higher budgets.
Yes, Councilman, thank you for making the point again. I was turning to Councilman Nowakowski to see if he had additional questions. He was the one who was originally asking the question. Do you have additional questions?
Well, I thought I had the floor, but go ahead, I thought he was just talking about mine, but go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, Councilman Nowakowski had asked a question, staff is answering the question. I was going back to Councilman Nowakowski to see if he had additional questions. Yes, Councilman, I'm calling you.
I called you on the phone, sorry about that.
Yeah, I'll make sure you have full and fair opportunity to make whatever points that you would like, Councilman. Yep, please, go ahead. Councilman Nowakowski, do you have additional questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I'll be supporting this item after meeting with some of the seniors in our senior centers in District 7. Very supportive. They're even fundraising for those seniors that don't have the funds to pay the $20 a year, so very, very supportive. Everyone's really excited, and they're happy that their senior centers are staying open.
Thank you very much, Councilman Nowakowski. Any additional comments from members of this council? Roll call. DeCecio.
No.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
No.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so the item passes on a six-to-three vote. We'll now go back to our regular order of budget items, one through six. I guess we do, do we need a suspension of the rules for items one through six? Okay, Vice Mayor, can I get a suspension of the rules, so we can move forward with items one through six?
Actually, item one is the suspensions.
I'm sorry. Item number one is the proposed suspension of the rules. Vice Mayor, can I get a motion on that?
Motion to suspend the rules and change the order of business to permit the holding of public hearings and special meetings in connection with the proposed tax levy for fiscal year 2014-15 and adoption of the final 2014-15 annual budget and the final 2014-15 capital funds budget and the final 2014-15 reapportion funds budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
What item is this, Mayor? Okay, I got it here, got it.
No problem, it's a suspension of the rules. Leonard Clark, you want to provide testimony on the suspension of the rules or the budget item itself?
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just gonna, I assume these are all on roll calls anyway, so go ahead, that's fine, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clark, did you wish to provide testimony on the suspension of the rules? Or the item, the underlying item itself? Okay, so I have a motion to suspend the rules. We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. Item number two is a public hearing on the proposed property tax levy and adoption of the final 2014-15 budget. Mr. Clark, I'll put your card in this item, so I will now open the public hearing. Do you have any cards on item number two? Mr. Clark, I'll let you go first. So this is on the proposed property tax levy and adoption of the final 2014-15 annual budget, up to two minutes.
Mayor and council members, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Leonard Clark. I'm actually just letting you know that I'm deeply concerned, but I do think it's great that you had all the public hearings, but being that I'm not one of the people who has $100,000 house, $200,000 house, these types of things, I would strongly encourage you to continue having these hearings, and not making it so hard for people to come down here at 3:00 in the afternoon, when most of us have to work and are off till later in the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Ms. Rogers, Greta Rogers is next, opposed to the item, and then Dee Dee Barker is in favor, not wishing to speak. If you change your mind, Dee Dee, please come forth.
Mayor, I believe I indicated on my card two and four, did I not, or am I mistaken?
I have cards for you on items two, three, and maybe, no, two and three is what I have for you.
Two and three are both budget-related, correct?
That is correct, yep.
I'll speak to both at one time.
Thank you.
I'm opposed to this budget, because we are allegedly, and I've never seen an accounting of it, $38.8 million in the shorts on the revenue for this fiscal year, where we have two months, two weeks to go, and you are raising the revenue by $9 million for the coming year. Only fools and gamblers raise estimates of revenue when they're in the shorts. We're about 4 tenths of a percent in the shorts right now. That's why I oppose the budget. The budget should not have been increased, it should have been decreased, and savings found, as Mr. DeCecio, Mr. Waring, and Mr. Gates have expressed with specificity, and also, you should never have reduced the food tax this current fiscal year. You've made your own bed, you can lie in it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rogers, for your testimony. The next speaker, Ms. Barker, did you wish to provide testimony on this item?
I'd just like to make a statement.
Please.
And this is for all the items, capital operation.
That's perfectly fine.
I think, particularly after I listened to our city manager, Ed Zirker, I think that he, last evening, I think that the city has tried to go ahead and do the best that they could by having all of the people contribute, and so this is, may not be the best of all worlds, and I'll speak later on some operational expenses that I'm against, but I'm going to support all of this now, and let's go forward and do the best practices. Thank you.